This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
So we're going to start the meeting of the Finance Committee. We're still acting under Zoom in accordance with state open meeting guidance. First thing we'll do is approve the minutes from February 23rd. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve the minutes of February 23rd. Do you have any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Peak.
Aye.
Councilor Denham.
Aye.
Councilor Biss says aye. The mayor isn't here. Public speak. Now is the time, if you want to speak. Caroline, go ahead. Caroline, you're muted.
Yeah, no, I think I'm unmuted. Am I unmuted now?
Yes, you are.
Yes, okay. Carolyn Cushing, Main Street. And I have been watching for, and I've sent a few emails to the mayor. I'm interested in knowing kind of the bigger picture about the ARPA spending. I know many other cities and towns have, you know, guidelines for what they want to support, and they're inviting applications from community groups to apply. I happen to work for Mass Audubon. I'm not representing them here. I'm just, I happen to work for Mass Audubon, which has sanctuaries across the state, and many sanctuaries are finding out and applying. At Arcadia, there was a call from North Hampton, and you know, we put something in. Um, so I, I know that that is the, the mayor's purview exactly what's happening with that. Um, but I'm letting you know from the public's point of view, or me, a few people, that more communication or transparency about that would be great. Maybe there is an application process coming down the line. I see there's an item at the end of the agenda, COVID update. Um, but I've been watching and, and not seeing things. And, you know, maybe as city council, but could kind of ask some things or highlight some things that different meetings are in communications. So that was kind of my question, my support, and I will hope I can stay on long enough to catch whatever that report is about the COVID spending. So thank you very much. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Kira.
Thank you. First, I realize what I'm here to speak about is not on the agenda for tonight, but I would like to share my thoughts publicly as it is a current issue of concern. I've sent several emails over the last couple of weeks to members of both the School Committee and City Council to share my concerns with the current proposed budget from the School Committee. Um, it's very clear that an increase of 3% is not sufficient to keep the current staffing and services. It has recently come to my attention that the School Committee can propose a budget that meets the needs of our students, even if it does exceed the 3% increase. Um, I am in full support of a level service budget proposal and urge that all of you approve and support that as well. Over the last five years, the increase in the school budget has been an average of 1.65%. Last year, there was no increase in funding at all, and an increase this small or none at all translates to cuts in staff and necessary instructional materials. We have a beautiful state-of-the-art new school building. It is worthless if we do not fill it with highly trained teachers and power professionals at appropriate staffing levels to ensure lower student-to-teacher ratios and provide materials, resources, and professional development needed to address the complex needs of our students after such disruption to their learning. Funding our public schools is long overdue, but to continue to underfund our schools in the midst of a pandemic, after everything our teacher staff, administrators, and families have gone through and lost, is unconscionable. I urge that the School Committee Superintendent, City Councilors, and Mayor work together to do what is best for our students. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any other public speak? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to our agenda. The request from the retirement board to increase the COLA base by $2,000. I have to apologize for my not reading that correctly. I thought it was the COLA base going from 2,000 to 16,000, or a $14,000 increase. I'm sure my colleagues read it correctly, but I read it as a $14,000 increase. Obviously, the COLA base right now is $14,000. You can shake your heads, and you want to increase it to 16.
I'm not gonna lie, Dan. I made the same mistake. I was like, that's a hell of a COLA increase.
All right, so.
I re-read it.
The retirement board for all us, you know, idiots, maybe next time, from 14 to 16 would have been better. So I'm not panicking, oh, how much is that going to cost the city? Anyway, uh, why don't you, I, I, I'm glad, uh, guess, uh, who am I going to speak to? About the, the information that was sent to us was nice, and it looks like the retirement board is, retirement pension plan is in good shape. Even, I even know what an unfunded liability is. It took me 20 years, but I know what it is. And it looks like we're, we're moving toward getting that fully funded by 2032. Now, other councilors, if you really want to know what that is, I suggest you talk to Jen separately because it's a major education. But what I don't think anybody knows, and I'm not sure what that means, is what is a COLA base now? Is that what you're, just explain it, please, somebody? Who wants to answer? I have to be unmuted. And state your name for the record.
Uh, yes, again, um, it's Kimmy Wood, the administrator here at East Hampton Retirement Board. Again, thank you Chairman, President Omar, and City Council Legislative and Finance Committee for having us here today to speak. Um, I did have something that I wanted to kind of begin to end. Do you want me just to go right into explaining that piece right now?
Uh, yeah, if, if what you're gonna, explain what the COLA base is, and if there's something else that also adds to that, why don't you, you go ahead and say whatever you want to say.
Okay, so the COLA base itself, um, for example, at 14,000, we also get the 3% based on anything that is from that point on. So if someone is making less than the 14,000, it's based on the base underneath the 14,000. So if it's 14,000 and greater, the maximum benefit is 3% on the 14,000. So currently, right now, those retirees get $420 a year. We're asking.
Right there. You're talking about the base salary that some retirees get.
Correct.
If it's 14,000, they get 3% COLA increase. Am I reading that correctly?
Right, it's based on that amount, correct.
If they make less than 14,000, how does that work?
It's based on whatever their base salary is underneath that. So if they're making 11,000 or 12,000, it's based on that.
Okay. All right, continue then.
Okay, so, um, I, I, I kind of want to interject a little bit. Don Emerson, the chair, is on the board too, and I think he wanted to say a few things and introduce himself and myself. Would that be okay?
Well, why don't you finish with whatever you wanted to bring up, and I'll go to Don.
Okay, okay. So we feel as a board, a sense of responsibility to our current retirees and our future ones through these trying times. Uh, again, we are taking the first step in the process of accepting the Chapter 188 of the Acts of 2010 Municipal Relief Act, Section 19, Chapter 32 of 103J, which is increasing the current amount of our COLA from 14 to 16. Um, as I wanted him to come forward, we're going to explain the asset growth, the funding level, and the record gains of our system from 2015, when the Council and Finance Committee accepted and increased it from 12 to 14. Safe to say, we are all taken back with the news of Russian and Ukraine. Not only does the return of war to Europe take an unimaginable human toll, but it also has a far-reaching economic impact that will and has impacted us all. Today, retirees are struggling with the largest jump of inflation at 7.5% in 38 years. The sharp rise of inflation comes as no surprise to anyone, as prices for healthcare, Medicare, housing, and food, let alone the increase of 40% in gas and oil, and products continue to rise. In this case, the demand of American consumers for goods cannot be met by the supply chains, largely due to the economic changes brought about by the ongoing global pandemic and the current war in Europe. How does this impact our retirees? Of the 183 retirees, 35% are receiving a benefit pension less than 14,000. So these retirees don't even feel the benefit. In addition, since March 2020 to current, the number of retirees have increased during the pandemic. In addition, as a career public employee, many do not qualify for Social Security. If they happen to qualify, then the WEP and GPO laws take a big toll. For this group, the main, if not the sole, source of income is their public pension. For this reason alone, they are in need of additional help. This timing can't be perfect if that will capture both the 2020 and the 21 asset gains, which are amazing for our East Hampton Retirement Board. This puts our system in a good position to make an incremental increase in the base while not impacting the city's appropriation. I just want to explain a little bit about the actuary valuation that we are involved in right now. Every two years, PIRAC conducts an actuary valuation of our retirement and provides an up-to-date assessment of the fiscal condition of the system. And to capture both 2020 and 2021 assets and gains, this ensures the integrity of our long-term pension funding for the system. Each of the 104 boards in Massachusetts has a funded ratio. It's the percentage of assets that the retirement system has on hand to pay for the benefits currently owed to all retirees and vested employees. The higher the funded ratio is, the lower the overall unfunded liability, the better. Any system funded, keep in mind, at 65 to 74%, as being very well-funded. What does this mean for us? We are 74.9 funded, based on current and past returns, and continue to be on a positive path. As we are currently undergoing our valuation, it is anticipated, with preliminary, without the proposed increase of even asking for the 16,000, we have reduced our term by five years from 2032 to 2027. That's decreasing by five years. The average of all boards of the 104, the amateurization is about 2032, 2035, or 36. The percentage of the overall boards is about 58.3 average statewide funded. 39% of the 100 boards are 74 and above funded. What I did too, is I kind of went over our local boards where we stand. We're a standalone board. There are about four or five boards that are about 69 to 78 funded. The lowest one is Springfield, which is about 28.90 funded. We also have three regional boards that I pulled from, which is Berkshire, Hampden County, and Hampshire County. Berkshire has 29 towns. They're 83%. Hampden has 18 towns, which includes The Agawam, East Long Meadow, Long Meadow, Munson, Palmer, Wales, Wolverham, and Ludlow. They're at 48.70% funded. Hampshire County, 18 towns. They're at 62.4, including Amherst, Belchertown, Hadley, South and West Hampton. Again, our asset return market value went from 66.3 to 78.6 million. A 12 million difference does not extend the schedule. It keeps us on track. About the appropriation, every year, the city pays a portion of the appropriation by each of the government units. For fiscal 2023, it is about 3.7 effective at 7/1/22. This appropriation will not change. By increasing the COLA base for 14,000 to 16,000, the total amount to normal cost, it will judge, it was just by 1% versus 2015, where it adjusted 2%. Yet with the gains received and spoken about prior, will be a hugely offsetted amount. Now is the best time to share the success of our system with our retirees. Most of all, 104 systems have the ability to improve the COLA base without incurring new costs or increment government appropriation. With a range of 14 to 18,000 of 104 boards over the past few years, seven boards have raised their COLA base on their respective legislative bodies. To date, a total of 81 have increased COLA base beyond the 12,000 established in 1998. Could we have asked for 18,000? Absolutely, especially through these trying times. Yet we wanted to give back to our retirees with the successful gains that the board incurred and keep it reasonably. This places our system in a good position while not over-impacting the appropriation.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Let me just review a minute. We increased the COLA base from 12 to 14 in 2015. Now, by increasing the COLA base, if I understand you correctly, you're making it a higher figure so that the COLA would affect, would, would help our retirees, and would it affect more retirees? Because we're increasing it by $2,000. What I'm not understanding is, what's the benefit of this? How does it translate to the lowest salaried person all the way up? I'm just not understanding that.
Right, um, it does benefit overall for the board and the pension itself, but it does benefit the 16,000 or above. So if we increase that, that also increases that amount as well.
Okay, I think I understand now.
Yeah.
Um, you did say it does not impact the assessment.
The appropriation, right.
It's too late. Does it, in fact, the assessment in future years?
It will affect it next year, which will be a 1% increase.
Okay, Jen, before I let, let Don speak, hear up, so that my fellow councilors understand, how much are we putting into the retirement board each budget year? This year and next, and next fiscal year?
Okay, um, so for fiscal '22, which is current, we put 3.4 million. And for fiscal '23, Kimmy mentioned it in, in her, um, uh, in her letter, that is 3.7 million.
And that's directed, that's not something we have a choice about, right? That's, nobody's directing that we have to contribute.
Correct, yes.
Okay, all right, well, 3.7 million. So if we change this, it's going to go up 1%. Do some math. But that's not till fiscal year '24, correct? Kimmy? And 1%? And I guess that's why the City Council has to approve it.
37,143.
That's how much more it'll go up next year. Uh, I don't have any more questions. Tom, do you mind letting Don speak? He's the chair of the board, and then I'll get to your question. Go ahead, Don.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. That's all I wanted to say. I'm, uh, Don Emerson from East Street, East Hampton. I'm presently the chairman of the retirement board. I've been a member for 12 years, and I want to thank you for listening to us tonight. That was the main thing. Our retirees have worked dedicated service to the city, and as she mentioned already, there's the windfall. Tax realize that, uh, they get, if they're eligible for Social Security, they don't get 100%. They get 40% of what they're eligible for. So don't think they're getting Social Security plus the, uh, East Hampton Retirement. If they qualify for Social Security, some people never worked under the Social Security system. They just worked for us on our retirement system. And through no fault of their own, due to the increase in living, cost of living, which I last heard, you may have too, is 7.5%. Uh, it may go up now. I mean, I'm talking before. It's what I officially heard. And I want to thank the council for moving us from 12 to 14,000 in 2015. And we'd like to move forward with the COLA race to help our, and it would help. Part of your answer is, if somebody's making 18,000, it would still help. They get an increase on their first 16.
I get it.
So that would help them out too. State law allows to go to 18, as we mentioned, where we feel that's too much to grasp for right now. We want to help our retirees, and we feel this is a time to go. We made 12.3 million dollars in our investments last year. And if you're wondering about investments, might have a question on that. Uh, they're very diverse. It's not just, uh, equities, because you're going to say the market's going down now. It is. But this, PIRAC invests in lumber, in rental units, 10 different diversities, and global equities. So I'm not telling you you're going to make 8% next year, but I'm telling you that we're still going to be fine next year too.
Thank you, Don. Tom?
So just, I think I understand. I'm new to the Finance Committee. Um, just for the purpose of my minutes, what you're saying is that you receive, if you are receiving a pension because you work for the city, you are receiving a pension, you're receiving a COLA on the money you receive up to a certain amount. So right now, if you're making 15,000, you're receiving a COLA on the first 14,000 that you receive, and this would make it so that you get a COLA on your entire 15,000. Am I, is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Just want to make sure, because I've got a lot of stuff written here, and I'm trying to make it, uh, readable for the general public.
That's a great way to look at it, Tom. And it's a simplification, but it's great.
Right.
Uh, Kyle, do you have any questions, or a million questions?
I don't have any questions right now. I think, um, I, I thought I got it, and Tom's question really, I think, clarified that, so that was, that was helpful.
So we're looking at a $37,000 increase, but not until 2024's budget. And so not this July 1st, but next July 1st. It seems reasonable, especially since it's not 2016, but '14. I can't believe it. Next time you put in for this, just show the actual to the new. I hope, I don't know if I'll be here, but anyway. Jen or Hadel, do you have any comment on this? It doesn't seem to me to be, this personally, as a counselor, and of course, concerning city financing, a $37,000 increase a year from now doesn't seem to be something we can't afford. And I'm wondering if you had, you or Hadel have any comment on that? Or, or the mayor? I noticed she's here. Nothing?
I, I don't have any comment on it. I, I think that it's, um, it's something that the board, you know, should be looking at, because that's, 14,000 is, is, is a very low number. Um, you know, so if we can bump it a little bit, then.
The 3% per year, that's, that's dictated by state law, right? Or how is that determined, the COLA? And it changes based on the state evaluations or PIRAC evaluations, or is it always 3%? I don't know.
It, it's, it's always 3% by law, and that's, we, we, we vote on that every year.
Okay. Uh, any other comment?
Um, Chair Riss. This is the mayor.
Oh.
Chairman Riss.
I, I haven't seen your hand up or your face, so I'm sorry.
No, no, that, that's, that's fine. Um, and so I, I would just, you know, simply say, I'm in favor of the proposal and not surprised. Um, but give it, give kudos to, to Kimmy for putting this together, uh, the presentation and explaining something that's really very complicated. Um, and I, I would also say that East Hampton having its own retirement board, um, is fantastic. It's, you know, I would never recommend anything. Uh, gives us a lot of, of control, local control around the funds with a lot of good professional advice. Um, so I am, you know, for, for, you know, who or what matters, uh, I'm in favor. The increase in cost really is, is minimal, and it has a long-term impact. And I would love to see us in the next couple of years, if at all possible, to get to that 18,000. But I would rely on the expertise of our retirement board.
And I also want to compliment the retirement board. I'm looking at the document you sent us, Kimmy. 74.9% funded? That's incredible. It's probably the highest in the state. And that means you guys are investing carefully, and you're doing your job right. Because, as I understand it, unfunded, uh, retirement systems could go down the tubes, and nobody gets any money. So, uh, this is excellent. Counselors, if you have no more questions, I, I will entertain a motion to accept the COLA base increase of $2,000 from 14 to 16.
So moved.
Second.
So we have a increase from, uh, the COLA base for the retirement board from 14 to 16,000? Any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Peak?
Aye.
Councilor Denham?
Aye.
Councilor Riss says aye. Now, I'm not sure if this needs a public hearing. I apologize. I didn't ask Barbara. Um, it may not. If it does not need a public hearing, then I can report it out of committee next meeting, which is next week, a week from today. If it needs a public hearing, that would be in two weeks. But I guess we're okay, because, let me ask you this. When does, uh, once it's passed by the council, when does it start affecting the retirees? Immediately?
It will be effective on 7/1 for the new fiscal year of 2020.
So it doesn't affect the retirees until July 1st?
Correct.
Regardless, all right, so we're not in a big rush, but I will put it forward. I will send you an email, Kimmy, if Barbara says we do not need a public hearing, and I'd ask you to attend the next meeting. I'll just bring it out of Finance Committee. Okay?
Thank you so much, all of you. We really appreciate it, our board. Thank you.
I want to thank you on behalf of our retirees. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Good, you're welcome. Um, we now have the PEG access, uh, yearly thing we have to do. Hadel, you want to explain that again?
I'll master that, and I probably have to put it on the recording now. Um, PEG access is, um, used to be a revolving account, pretty straightforward. Money comes in, we, uh, pay to our East Hampton Media. City of East Hampton was a passerby town for this funds until two years ago, where state decided to make this account as a receipt reserve account. Um, and this, the state law states that, um, in order for any spending out of this account, we have to have a council slash finance vote on the total spending. There is a thought about putting whatever is available in that account, um, as, as a council vote, so we can use it, but it's going to take a while to build up the, the money in that account. So in order for Mayor's Office to process this payment to East Hampton Media, um, we have to get the vote, um, as an approval that council is okay to, uh, process. Um, council is okay with the payment out of city funds.
So just for the layman out there, understanding, this is the money that comes in from Spectrum? Or, and it, it goes to East Hampton Media? And the money that comes in has to be transferred to their account so they can use it? Or so the mayor can transfer it to their account, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and we do this every year?
Every, every quarter.
Every quarter?
Yeah.
Is it 53,000 per quarter?
Uh, yes, a little bit over mostly. So whatever comes in, that's that exact amount, but it's a big picture, 53,000 and change.
Okay, good. Any questions? This is, uh, to me, just a function that we need to do every quarter for East Hampton Media. They're doing a good job for us.
Yeah.
Counselors, anything?
Nothing here.
Okay, then I'll, I'll ask for a motion to approve the transfer from, uh, the PEG access account, 53,000, to the PEG access account, uh, 53,000, uh, for East, for the city. One is the income, one is the, uh, spending account, if I'm correct.
So moved.
Second.
So a motion of second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Councilor Peak?
Aye.
Councilor Denham?
Aye.
Councilor Riss says aye. Thank you. Well, this is up for public hearing. Uh, Hadel, you probably should be here next week in case we have any questions on it. But we've just done this, so many of the councilors, uh, will be remembering it.
Yeah, I mean, if we're doing it four times a year at some point.
People ask, oh, yeah.
We'll figure it out.
Yes.
Uh, I'm not sure of the order, but I get this order right. Hold on. The next thing is 6,900 for the actual study account. Uh, this is you, Hadel? Correct?
No, that's out of HR.
HR.
Oh, okay. It says actuarial, so I got, you know, confused.
Yeah, it's the other post-employment benefits. It just comes out of the HR department. That's where it's funded.
Yeah, it's the other post employment benefits. It just comes out of the HR department. That's where it's funded.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, why don't you explain for anybody listening what OPEB valuation means?
Um, so, I mean, I'm not going to lie, Jen would be able to give a much better explanation of it.
Well, let Jen do it.
Thanks, Emily.
You're welcome, Jen.
So it's, it's a, it's an evaluation to determine, um, where we stand on OPEB.
What's OPEB? And I'm asking because others might want to know.
I gotcha. Other, or other post employment, retirement benefits.
Yeah, so it's like health insurance, dental, life insurance, those types of things, everything besides pension.
Right. So we're required, the amount that we're required to put into our OPEB account. Is based on these assessments and what it is, is they do these assessments to determine if we, if our funding mechanism. Is on the right track.
And who's they?
Uh, Odyssey is the name of the company. And they've been doing this for a few years.
Yeah.
And just, uh, sorry, I'm, um, just to let you know, this is one of those things where we have a. Full valuation. Every two years. And on the off years, it's a review. So this happens to be a full valuation year, which is why it's the, the amount that it is on an off year. I think it's. Closer to like two thousand dollars or something along those lines. So, and it's, we're required to have these done, so.
And this is just catching up to, to, again. A budget shortfall, am I correct? Okay, any other questions from counselors? Seems like. We have to do this. Okay, then I'll take a motion to approve a six thousand nine hundred dollar. Transfer from free cash to an actual study account.
So moved.
Tom said second, I read his list. Uh, any further discussion, hearing none? Tom Peak?
Aye.
Counselor Denham?
Aye.
And Counselor Riss says aye. Last one is school liability account and city liability count. Is this you, Emily, too?
Yeah, this is kind of similar.
Again, we're short budgetarily for these two accounts.
Yeah, because we can only estimate so much, like usually they'll give us a percentage anticipated of what it's going to be. Um, so we estimate as close as we can when we're planning the budget, but we don't have the actual numbers at that time. So.
These are premium payments.
Yes, yeah, and we, so we'll pay, like you can pay them quarterly or whatever. This is just kind of the remaining for the end of the fiscal year.
And this will cover us for the rest of the year, okay?
Yep.
Seems, uh, obviously necessary. We want to make sure we're covered for liability.
Yes.
Uh, counselors, any questions? Anybody? Hearing none, I may have a motion to approve twenty thousand four sixty four. From free cash to the school and city liability accounts.
So moved.
Second.
A motion for twenty thousand four sixty four to be transferred to the two liability accounts, eight thousand three hundred ninety and twelve thousand seventy four. For the sake of the minutes, I separated them. Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, Counselor Peak?
Aye.
And Counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. Before I get to the, I wanted to talk a little bit about. Counsel and. And, um. Like school committee, uh, stipends. I wanted to give the mayor a chance. Uh, we had a question tonight from one of our citizens about ARPA funding and I'm wondering. Uh, we haven't had any new reports from Jen on the COVID nineteen grant funding. And I'm wondering if you could update us on when we might see how. The American Rescue Act funds are being spent. When, uh, you might be able to report on that.
Uh, yes, we'll post. Um, we will post the spreadsheet. Uh, right after April first, once we do our first official report and then. We should have our ARPA plan that we're putting together with the consultant. That will be posted on, uh, line and will show what is possible. Uh, that we, how we prioritize the projects. Um, and some of them will be later and some of them won't be funded at all. It, it's really a balance. Between using ARPA funds or if we get a grant, for, for instance, so. And as far as the school and the ESSER money, um, and circuit breaker, special ed circuit breaker. I cannot answer. It's their money, they report it.
Oh, no, I wasn't asked, I wasn't asking you to do that. I was looking at the city side. So maybe for our first meeting in April. If that spreadsheet's out, we can look at it.
Yeah, we'll post it. I, I can certainly submit it to council, but we're going to put it right on, uh, the website.
Okay, great.
And, uh. Yeah.
Obviously, people are curious. I'm curious. Everybody's curious. So thank you very much, Mayor.
You're welcome.
I'm going to share the screen. Initiate discussion on. City council. I don't think this is the one I want. This is a, this is a salary, uh, I mean. A city council spreadsheet of who's. What the counselors are getting. I, I, I wanted to do a newer one, so let me stop the share. And. See if I can do it correctly. So this is what Barbara just recently gave us. I asked her to look at other cities and towns. I've heard that there are some counselors that might want to increase our current salary is. Four thousand dollar president gets five, five hundred more. Most of the cities and towns you see here. Have a larger budget and a larger, um. Population. So. I'm not sure where I'm at with it. I'm, I'm willing to entertain an increase, but I'm wondering if anybody has any thoughts on this yet. Um, and I believe also if we increase this. Well, I, I forget when the last time we increased it. I think it was two terms ago. Um, and we also increased the school committee's allotment. So I think we should do both if we're going to do it. I, I don't have a figure. I really don't. I just need to know. If anybody has any thoughts, and I know there's other counselors that wanted to attend, so I'm just starting the talk. And, and next meeting, I'll let other counselors know that we're doing this. President Gomez, do you have any ideas, um, where people are thinking? Tom, go ahead.
Yeah, I guess, uh, my, my question would be. Like, have we heard from anyone? That they feel that the current levels, I mean, I know what other communities do, you know, is here and that's interesting, but. Is there a sense from? Anyone that. Either there's people who are really unhappy with the current levels or alternatively. That there's a sense that, like, maybe people aren't running because of the current levels, because just with everything going on, unless it was clear that there was like. Like a, a constituency who thought this was a problem, you know, my, my first. Instinct would be to, to not do anything, but, um, I don't know if there's other people who have really strong feelings about this.
Uh, President Gomez, do you mind answering that? Because you brought to my attention, there might be some people who thought it would should go up.
Yes, thank you. Um, the answer is yes. It's, it's a few counselors and I do agree with you, Counselor Peak, and maybe for a few constituents. Or maybe a few counselors, uh, the increase of the, this stipend that we receive probably will be, uh, disturbing for so, some people. But the reality is the, um, the amount of hours that some counselor put in, in this position is, is a lot. And if, uh, when we start talking about the people, they are in disadvantage, disadvantage, and they want to be part of the. Of the council, serve as a council, this stipend is a little low for some of them. They have to find, uh, multiple, uh, part times to, um. To have a better, um. Income in their houses, and if they want to increase the participation of their, of the women's with kids and, uh. A woman in totals, right, and the minorities, people of color, the BIPOC community, I think we should review it. Um, and the, and, and, um, probably the, the, the first question that a lot of people have, what, what about if the counselor is, is a LACSE counselor, right? So the people have the opportunity in two years to read off that counselor. Um, like, like someone else in any other employee position. Um, that is, uh, that's a concern that I, that I have. Um, maybe we can keep it this way, but we have to know that we are not attracting. Uh, people of color, they probably, uh, a little money will help to be part of the, of the council or school committee. Uh, members.
Mayor LaChapelle, I see your hand up.
Uh, yes, so I actually don't have, when Barbara put the chart together, um. It really surprised me, the range. Um, and I was thinking about why or what for, so I mean, just a comment on that. Remember the, the responsibilities or the extent of power of any given city council. Is determined by a home rule charter. Uh, so for instance, Boston's, uh, city council has very little check. On the executive branch compared to ours. Um. The other thing, and I say that just as a passing comment, I, you know, I don't really. I mean, I do have a thought on, on salaries in general and expense, but the other thing I would say. And it, it happened, um, just now in the meeting, uh, we do have a request into the city attorney. Um, to look at stipends versus salary. And how a stipend versus salary is increased. And is there a specific carve out in MGL? For city council to look at those stipends, not only for themselves. Um, but we're also school committee, which is a separate budget. And for clerk, uh, the clerk for the council. So it's not about me being opposed to an amount of money or an increase. Um, but I, I do want to have clarification in writing stipend versus salary. And who has? The, the power to increase what stipends.
Yes, that is a question that some of those type salaries, for instance, elected officials is. Put in the charter that, that. We need to look at these every year.
Yep.
Every, beginning of every term and then, uh, they're not effective until the next term, but the charter says the. The stipends, whatever term you want to use for elected officials. Uh, the council needs to look at it and has that authority. So it, it is curious how, uh, the attorney will look at that and I MGL looks at it, because it does affect how. How we move forward. Tom, you have your hand up?
I was just going to say that I really welcome that review because it's come up a few times since I joined this committee that. Uh, there were cases. Where we, you know, the, where, where, where it seems like the council has the authority to set these things and yet that has budgetary implications. That our powers, the council isn't normally granted in our charter. So just getting some clarification about. What we can or cannot do and, you know. What that process, you know, what the back and forth should look like with the mayor's office, uh, to me would be helpful, um.
I think it goes to the ambiguity in the charter regarding, you know, we have the authority by ordinance to set these salaries. But the mayor has the authority to appropriate funds. So that's the conundrum that you're referring to.
Yes, and so I'm just saying. I, I guess I'm not actually saying anything new or useful, just that, uh. I, I'm, I'm welcome that conversation.
Well, we have until December thirty first to make this decision, this particular decision, so. I hope the city attorney will get back to us a little bit before that. Counselor Denham?
Yeah, I, I feel the, you know, similarly, I'd like to hear more about that. Um, on, on a personal level, it, it makes me a little uncomfortable to vote for a salary increase for myself. And that's just kind of where I'm sitting at this particular moment, but I do. I, I do want to acknowledge that I, I heard what President Gomez was saying. I, I think that we do have to think about. What access to city government looks like and, you know, is there. Uh, and likely there is a financial component to that in terms of one's ability to be able to participate in. Leadership opportunities. And so I think that's also a conversation that, that needs to be had, uh, just in terms of. You know, speaking to community members or, or obviously talking amongst ourselves, but I think that's a, a very important thing, particularly when we're talking about. Um, access.
Just to reflect on what you said. Um, what's great about this is that you have to get reelected to get the salary if you do. You're not getting an immediate raise, which is good. Counselor Gomez? President Gomez, my apologies.
No, that, I'm all right. Uh, by the way, I just want to say the same, um, Counselor Denham. Is the race is for us, if you get elected again, right, is for the next council. So when we are, when we are making this decision, basically we are making a decision for the next council and to, um. And again, I'm, I'm no one of the council that I'm pushing this a lot. Is, is all the council that are interested to do it. And is thinking about the future council to be more diverse and to be more inclusive with the people of color and, and the people who need more. Maybe we can help them to be part of the, um, of the commi, the, the council of any committee, like especially the school committee. I, I think the conversation will be good for, to have it.
I will announce that the finance committee may, uh, report, Mr. President, that we will go into this again. So those persons, counselors who are interested, attend. Mayor LaChapelle, do you still have your hand up or, or was that just?
Uh, no, I just wanted to add, um, a, a comment on, uh, President Gomez and Counselor. Uh, Denham's, um, feeling around equity and increasing, um, you know, the money. I, I've heard some. Not pushback, but just points of, oh, well, increasing it from, you know, increasing it a thousand dollars or five hundred dollars or two thousand dollars. Really, is that going to make a difference? And I would argue that it does, because it shows the community and prospective candidates. That we are as a city making forward movement. And recognize that this may be a barrier, um, for participation. Uh, and, and running profits. So I, I just kind of wanted to get that on the, the record.
Well, I, I tend to agree with, with everyone who's looking at this from an equity point of view. Um, if it'll attract a diverse, a more diverse council, why not? Um, on the other hand, I've always. Been resistant to. Council salaries being increased because I don't serve to make money. I serve to. Um, help the city. It's nice that we get a good stipend for it. And another thing I'll comment on is that. Comparing us to other communities, there has, there is some value to it. But I think we need to. Take that less of a. Important point, East Hampton is East Hampton. And we should, we should do what we think is right for East Hampton regardless. Of where other peoples, like Greenfield is only at two thousand. Well, that might be okay for Greenfield. They're a bigger city. But we even don't even know their charter and what their counselors are expected to do. We know what we do. And, uh, I think we should just do what we feel is right for East Hampton, so. Saying that, um, I don't feel like we should continue this discussion, because obviously there's other counselors that want to get involved. I do want to say though, that I've heard it from President Gomez. School committee also has to be increased if we want to attract people there. Now, they have. Less responsibility than the full council. We have the whole city. They have the schools, which is why you see the difference in salaries. Um, here, but there should be an increase there, maybe the same percentage. Mayor LaChapelle?
Uh, just to add a comment to that, uh, so I would disagree, the school committee has as much. Um. Uh, responsibility, in fact, the school committee oversees two thirds. responsibility, in fact, the school committee oversees two-thirds of the municipal budget, including parts of the budget that the city actually funds outside of what we get presented from the school committee budget, so there's there's really a careful balance of how the money is spent in the actual department, but also what money outside of that budget comes from city, so I think that there's, you know, there's always a discussion between school committee and city council, but I would say that the responsibilities are much different, for sure. But the school committee does oversee two-thirds of our municipal budget of forty-seven million dollars.
I guess I was repeating what I've heard for the many years I've been on the council, but that makes a lot of sense, too. Maybe they should be equally distributed, that's a lot, but it's a major increase for the, if we were to increase, say, the and I'm not proposing this, but say we increase the council to six thousand, should we increase the school committees to six thousand as well, that's a major increase for them, so. Over the years, I've heard different points of view, and the mayor's point is well taken. Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have a lot of strong feelings on this one, but I would say that there definitely were a few points over the last two years where I saw what the school committee was dealing with and what we were dealing with, and went like, oh man, I'm sure glad I'm on the city council right now and not the school committee, just in terms of like the levels of the intense conversations, and, I mean, we certainly have had some meetings that have gone super long, they had a lot of meetings that went really, 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 really long. And definitely, I think there, those meetings, I mean, just in terms of the intensity of the sort of the sort of interactions, like constituent interactions that they have, I mean, like we've, we definitely have some very intense, some intense interactions, but I think, you know, when you're talking about people's kids, if my casual observation, having not seen a ton of their meetings, because they often overlap with ours, is that those meetings, I mean, just in terms of like the toll that it takes on people and the level of effort and the level of work that they put in. I'm not sure I would necessarily argue that they'd have a lighter lift than us, so that, that's honestly something, if we're talking about the idea of actually budgeting some money and raising these things up, I really would be almost more interested in seeing us move closer to equity there. That almost would be a bigger priority for me than seeing the council salaries or the council stipends increased, I mean, I do think that if we were just talking about separately, like, we are just talking about like fairly rewarding labor, I mean, I could put in the amount of hours that I put in on the city council at a minimum wage job and make substantially more money, now, again, I don't do this for the money, but you know, I do think there's a case to be made that for the, just the sheer amount of work that goes in, you could see something. But for me, actually, a prior, if we're talking about having the money to do this, and we've cleared up how we're gonna do it, I actually think that where I'd be almost more interested is trying to see some equity between the school committee and the city council, because in terms of the things that, these things actually, you know, it's a stipend for the expenses you incur, and if their meetings are just as long as ours, they're incurring the same sort of expenses, right? I mean, that's just my thought off the top of my head.
I think, I think it goes to respect, respecting, you have those duties, and I agree with you and the mayor on that. And I'd be, I, I see it, maybe it takes two terms, but we should move toward equity, if we raised ours twenty-five percent, we raised theirs fifty percent or seventy percent, so that by the time the next term goes around, we get to equity. Or we just do it, I mean, I, I, I can go either way, I mean, I think the argument, I think the argument to making it closer to the city council is, is a good one, and that's probably a priority, I would agree with you, Tom. I don't know what that figure will be, and I'd like to close this discussion now and get other councillors involved. And I also invite school committee members, but they tend to have meetings in the same, do they have meetings tonight? I guess not, the mayor's here, so I would invite them to come, and we can talk about this further next meeting. Because I'd like to, I'd like to hear everybody's perspective, but again, we have until December thirty-first, so.
Right, it's not a rush.
No, so unless there's anything else, I'm going to stop the share and thank you all, and entertain a motion to adjourn. Somebody say so moved.
Second.
Okay, a motion to adjourn, Constable Peak?
Aye.
Constable Dunham?
Aye.
Constable Riss says aye, thank you all very much.
Thanks, everyone.